Good evening. I'd like to call to order the Waukesha County Council meeting for May 31, 2016. Could you please call the roll?
Barbara Brenner?
Here.
Red Brown?
Here.
Barry Buchanan?
Here.
Todd Donovan?
Here.
Ken Mann?
Here.
Sup Paul Sidoo?
Here.
Carl Weimer?
Here. Thank you. Would you please rise and join me in the flag sleeve? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Just a couple of quick announcements. If you have your cellphone with you, please turn it to vibrate or off. And if you'll be handing out any paperwork up here to us on the dais, please provide a copy to the clerk. Don't we have minutes? So, we will go right into our public hearing. Audience members who have signed up for the public hearing will be called first and asked to form a line on either side of the chambers. If you didn't sign up and you still want to speak, we will make that accommodation for you. Each speaker should state his or her name for the record, and will be given three minutes to address the council. The council staff will give you a 30-second warning, and then we'll call time when the three minutes is over. We have one person who has signed up to our public hearing tonight, which is on?
Recreation.
Waukesha County Comprehensive Plan, Chapter 9, Recreation. And we will now open the public hearing. And Larry Helm.
Hi, Larry Helm on Squawkamuck Road. I guess you guys know by now that my background is in park planning in California, so I retired as a superintendent. And I just wanted to comment that we're not occupying 70 percent of this county. It's one giant park east of here. And one of the things I see, all the county maps you guys always show, kind of leave off the 15 miles to the east that's empty of people. I really think that the county chapter on recreation should look into getting people to use that property, bus them out there, work with the Forest Service, work with the Department of Natural Resources, and use some of their resources instead of charging all the property owners here taxes for parks that we could spread out over the land we already have instead of buying new ones. So, that's my point. If you look in that chapter, there's not much said about going east, where we've got wildlife corridors, we've got massive watersheds. And I go hiking up there a lot. I know Ken does, too. You never see anybody up there. I mean, it's time to start putting people there a little bit, not a lot, but spread it out. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else that would like to speak on Chapter 9 of the Comprehensive Plan? Seeing no one, we will close the public hearing, and we'll move straight into our open session.
But we keep taking comments?
Yeah, we are continuing to take comments on the comp plan. Open session, audience members will have up to three minutes, same as the public hearing, and the staff will give you 30-second warning and announce when the time is, your three minutes is up. Before beginning to comment, please state your name and your topic of interest. And if your name is complicated, please spell it for the clerk. We will open the public session.
It's me again, Larry Helm. I want to talk a little bit about, I have a 20-acre hobby farm out on Squawkamuck Road. And as you know, I've been supervisor on the Conservation District now for about five years, and I've been on your county egg board. And I'm concerned about, people keep talking about farmers got their cows in the creek, and we need permanent buffers. I gave you a sheet here, and if you look at the column two and three, there's a bunch of numbers there. Those are all water tests. I've been testing the, I'm in a unique situation. All the water leaving my property is in two ditches. So, every month, I've been testing the water since 12-5-2014, when there's water in the ditches or it's not frozen solid. And my water is meeting all the TMDLs of the county easily, except if you look on 11, line 11, it was 540. And I recorded that particular date, two days prior to that test, there were 21 Canadian geese in the ditch above that test. And just 21 Canadian geese ran the normal, you know, 36 to 50 fecal coliforms per milliure, up to 540, or over 10 times. So, waterfowl matters, okay? And my background's in oceanography. If people want to tell me that I don't know how to make tests, well, fine. I used to get paid by Oregon State University to teach this stuff, so I think I can take a regular fecal coliform test pretty accurately. And I'm going to keep doing this. So, here's my point. You guys are taking through all the regulations about 18 percent of my property a year for five months. I can't use it unless the grass gets high enough that I have to move the cows in. But all of you know, it freezes solid around here starting November 1st, so the cows are not on that ground until about April of 15th, maybe. The buffer fences stay up from November 1st to May 1st. If we go to a permanent 100-foot buffer, I will lose 80 percent of my property and be out of business, and I will be out of here. Because if I can't use my property, I'm not paying the taxes. So, the other thing I want to say is I've traveled all over this county for the last three years of my various responsibilities with the Conservation Service, and I have seen no cows in any ditches. And my frustration is 95 percent of our farmers are doing their level best to clean up their act. We've got maybe 5 percent at the most that aren't. And I don't see ecology finding these guys. I mean, if you really want to do something, take care of the guys that are breaking the law, and quit blaming the other 95 percent and putting more regulations on them, because it's just driving people out of here. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak at the open session? Seeing no one, we will close the open session and move into the consent agenda.
Mr. Chair, before we do that, I recognize we have several members of our paramedic and emergency services staff here. And I know the next, the last item we have on the agenda is the ordinance. I'd actually like to volunteer that we consider that one first.
Okay, I'll take that one, since it's no committee. We will, is everyone okay with that?
Yes.
Okay. So, we will move to the ordinance under no committee assignment. Ordinance providing for submission to the qualified voters of Waukesha County, a proposition imposing the levy of a regular property tax each year for six years, collection beginning in 2017 at a rate of 29 and a half cents or less per 1,000 of assessed valuation to continue to provide emergency medical services in the general election to be held on November 8, 2016. And I so move.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Discussion, Ms. Brenner?
Is that the way they're always done to say "or less"? Okay.
Any other discussion? Please call the roll.
Barbara Brenner?
Yes.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Ken Mann?
Yes.
Sup Paul Sidoo?
Yes.
Carl Weimer?
Yes.
Passes unanimously. Now, we will go back to consent agenda.
Mr. Chair, the Waukesha County Finance and Administrative Services meeting met today, and we considered several items of the consent agenda. There was items 1 through 5. These were all discussed, and we're met with the unanimous recommendation for approval, and I so move.
Okay, it's been moved to accept the consent agenda. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That passes unanimously.
Mr. Chair, the next item is request approval for the City of Bellingham's request for Economic Development Investment Program grant funding in support of the waterfront and Granary/Laurale Street project in the amount of $1.1 million. This was discussed and received unanimous approval in the committee, and I so move.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have any discussion? Mr. Donovan?
Yeah, I am hugely interested in seeing the waterfront project move forward, but I can't support this. And it's partly about what I think we should be doing EDI money for. This whole thing predates me, but the application is, it's just kind of a mess. This last updated is supposedly 11/13, but there's inserts from 2015 and 2016. We discussed this earlier in committee, the score sheet that we would use now for these projects. This would get a seven out of 25 at best. So, I, the map that, nobody, I think, could look at this and understand exactly what we're funding and why we're funding it. And that, you know, that might just be, it's just a messy application. But for that reason, I can't support it.
Any other discussion? Ms. Brenner?
So, you don't understand the application, or you don't think this is an EDI-type project?
It's an EDI-type project that would be low priority, given our current, or the current threshold project scoring thing. I understand this predates that scoring process. But there's, there's just, there's stuff in the documents about Western Washington putting thousands of square feet of office space, classrooms down there, which is not in the state capital budget. There's just, there's omissions, confusion, errors in the application, and I can't support it, even if it was qualified for EDI money.
Ms. Brenner?
Could we possibly table this so he can get his questions answered? I think maybe when you have them answered, I don't know if you will or not, but you might change your mind, because...
Tyler Schroeder, Waukesha County Deputy Executive. Earlier today during committee meeting, Ted Carlson, City of Bellingham Public Works Director, was here. So was Brian Heinrich, the Deputy Administrator for the City of Bellingham, in anticipation for additional discussion and answer questions that might arise. That would have been a good time to provide additional information in detail. I know that the city is looking to move forward, and like Councilmember Donovan indicated, I think he understands the issue, and that it was already approved by the EDI Board in 2008. And this is just to move forward because they're ready to accomplish the project. I don't know specifically if the city is relying on this action today to fund the project. My assumption is that two-week delay would be fine, but I can't confirm that. And we did have the committee meeting earlier today to go through any details.
Mr. Donovan? I don't think a delay, I mean, it's, so I, I mean, 2,000 cents is a long time before my time, but the criteria we use now, this doesn't come close. That's not going to change. So, I don't know if it, it wouldn't matter if we spent another couple of weeks.
Oh, okay.
Mr. Brown?
Yeah, one of my concerns is that it's not clear to me what the fund balance is. I know the executive gave us a number today, but at the moment, based on the exhibit provided in our packet on page 53, it shows that our ending fund balance is negative $700,000, and that we have almost $9 million in commitments. So, I need more clarity to understand what the numbers are. And I know the, I know the staff have said that they will get this to us. I share Mr. Donovan's concerns about the scoring. I think it's fair to say that if this was scored now, it wouldn't meet the cut. And I've been, been concerned for a long time that what we call economic development funding projects doesn't really raise to the standard I would consider to be the priorities we should be focusing on as a community to raise the average family wage in this community. So, I'd like to see this put on hold as well.
Do you like to move that?
I'd like to move that we table this.
Second.
A second, oops.
Okay, it's been moved in second. It to table this for two weeks? Any discussion? Mr. Sidoo?
I wanted to add that even if it was approved in 2008, and I see the budget, and I see a substantial investment by the city into this project in addition to this $1.1 million, where I read it, they're putting up, what, $6, $7 million? It'd be good that, rather than taking the application, which is like eight years old, and append that application as a new approval, if they can really update that, and just treat it as a new application and put it in, and append this thing as re-approved, but update the information to the current status. And maybe you have set up questions you want to send to them?
Any other, Mr. Brown?
I've already answered it.
Yeah.
I think the other thing I'd add, what was, what was this, when was this originally approved, 2007?
Yes, in 2007, the council approved a $1.1 million grant to the City of Bellingham.
So, this council is being asked to be bound by the decision of a council that was nine years ago?
In which the City of Bellingham moved forward with a project based on that commitment.
Yeah.
And then it went back to the EDI Board just recently, based off of this information, using that past history. And the EDI Board unanimously moved it forward to the council for review and decision today.
Okay.
And if I could follow up just a little bit as well, in regards to the projected cash balance, we had that discussion this morning in committee meeting. The EDI fund in total has a fund balance of $4.725 million. In regards to the grant expenditures, which is this project, that is, as the council knows, 35 percent to the EDI funds. And with this project, which has been committed since '07 and used in our projections, if and when the council approves the $1.1 million, the fund balance for that portion would be
Mr. Mann?
Like Mr. Brown and Mr. Donovan, I've been unimpressed with many of the EDI applications that have come through over the years, and I've voted against a lot of them. This one, to me, gets a bit of an exemption from my dislike, only because it's been approved by the county once before. And while I don't think that everything a county does, or a county council does, shouldn't be eligible to be reversed by a later council, agreements or commitments, especially of a financial nature, that are made by the county and the county council should be honored by succeeding councils. This seems like one of those times, you know, that I appreciate that might not score high, given the rankings system we use today. To me, that's not, not, doesn't, it doesn't feel great, but it doesn't feel relevant either. It's just, it doesn't seem fair, you know? We said we would pay for something. The city lived up to their end of the bargain. I feel like we can't just back out right now. I completely understand the idea of wanting to get a more thorough or accurate report, or more of an understanding of the fund balances. That's completely legit. So, I don't, I will vote for this regardless if it's tonight or two weeks from tonight, but if you, if it makes you guys more comfortable to wait a couple of weeks, I guess I'm fine with that, too. But I'll be supporting it just because I feel like that's just the way it goes when we have relationships with other governments that might take nine years to fulfill their half of the bargain.
Mr. Brown?
Yeah, one of the other things I'm struggling with is that the numbers, as presented here, are not in a format that I would expect. We've got sales tax revenue as a negative number in all years. I mean, it's not a negative number, it's a positive number. We've got the balance at the end of the year as being a negative balance. Yeah, I'm certainly happy to sit down with the executive's office and be walked through these, but I'm pretty good with numbers. And so, I've certainly seen a lot of balance sheets and P&Ls and cash flow statements, and this one doesn't make sense.
That's, Tyler Schroeder again, that's a, that's a fair, fair comment. We have additional information that we discussed today that I was going to provide to the council. I did not anticipate that that would be a hurdle for today's discussion. And so, as we talked through it during committee meeting, I thought we had gotten to that point where we were going to continue that discussion into the future. And, but it's a fair comment to what's in the packet compared to the information that we have that we can follow up, that we committed to provide to the council.
I think you were next, Barbara.
Oh, I, you know, I didn't have a problem with it, but I don't have as much knowledge about specifics as these two council members. I would feel more comfortable if we tabled it and waited till we got that. And if people still don't want to do it, that's their business. But I think it's fair.
Mr. Donovan and Mr. Sidoo?
Yeah, and I appreciate Councilmember Mann's, there is this, previous councils, to some extent, maybe obligate us, but I think whoever puts the application together, look at the map on page 41. Like, since 2007, that's the best graphic illustration I can get of how we're going to spend a million dollars. I got no idea what I'm looking at. And there's, there's just a bunch of sloppy, lazy stuff in here, even beyond the questions of EDI funding. It's just like somebody took something, you know, from a document six years ago, pasted a couple of things in, give us a million dollars that we wouldn't qualify for now if we used the current system. So, I could maybe get past some of that stuff, but I can't see anything from that map. You know, Google Earth is free.
Mr. Sidoo?
I had a different question about the process. So, if the council approves a grant, EDI grant to somebody, to me, it's obligated in 2008 or '09. Shouldn't it be carried on on your papers as obligated means that we are going to do that? And, or, I just wanted to know on the fund balance on your thing, then you are carrying out that, okay, we obligated, that's $1 million, we should keep it in reserve because one of these years or one of these days, we're going to end up paying for it?
That's correct.
What was the reason for them to ask us again? If that was approved and given, what is the reason to come back to us again and say, re-improve it or reallocate it?
That's correct. The fund balance and the projections that the county has used for EDI has had that as committed, the $1.1 million, since 2007.
Oh, it is committed and shown as such?
It has been, and it's shown as such.
Okay.
My understanding is that in 2007 and '08, there wasn't quite enough information about the project, and so they waited until it was ready to be constructed. The City of Bellingham has now indicated it's ready to be constructed, and so they came back through.
I mean, that's why I'm asking, are they asking for second approval? Or is it that saying, okay, please write the check?
Actually, what happened was the economy tank. I was on the city council at the time.
Oh, yeah.
And what happened was all that kind of work got suspended. And, but I think that's a valid question. Why are they requesting it again?
Why does it have to come back through the council?
That was, that was the county's decision back in 2007 and '08, was to come back to when it is ready to go. And it could have been the timing, it could have been the economy. I don't know all of those details. But there was the decision from the council to come back to get the $1.1 million.
Okay. I'm still, that's got me a little confused, because either you come back because something, you have another bite at the apple, or you don't come back. I mean, I can see, they wouldn't want to come back for it until it was ready, till the money was there.
I'm going to circle back to the motion that's on the table, which is to delay this for two weeks. Is there any more comments on that motion specifically?
I would just like to add one other reason why I want to do that.
That's relevant to the motion. Go ahead.
Is there, I respect the process of what previous councils may have done in terms of obligations, but there's no, there's no documentation to that effect in here. There's nothing about any previous decisions or votes from EDI or the council in the information that we're being asked to vote on. So, when we do bring this back, I would like to see that as well, if I may, please.
Okay, any further discussion on the motion to table for two weeks? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
That passes 6 to 1 with Mr. Weimer opposed.
Mr. Chair, the next item is request authorization for the county executive to grant a utility easement to Puget Sand Energy for the purposes of providing electricity for athletic field lighting, the new fields at the Phillips 66 Soccer Park. This received unanimous approval from the committee, and I so move.
Okay, we have a motion on the table. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passes unanimously.
Mr. Chair, the next item is confirmation of the council's May 17, 2016, approval of Resolution 2016-018, a resolution authorizing the county executive to make application and enter into a grant agreement with the Washington State Recreation and Conservation Office for funding through the Washington Wildlife and Recreation Program for trail development at South Fork Park in the amount of $209,000. This received unanimous approval, and I so move.
Okay, we have a motion in front of us. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Oh, sorry, I missed your little pause.
I do. My biggest concern with this is, I remember when initially this was going through, and there, there were really mixed feelings in the South Fork Valley about it. And, but what bothers me the most is REIT money is, we have so many potential essential services for REIT money. It can be used, REIT II can be used for park stuff also, but there, if you look at the list of what is on that list, I mean, there are things that are absolute, super necessities. I think Mike has done a great job. It's just one of those things I'm not comfortable supporting, and I don't think it's going to make any difference. But when I see REIT II money, I love using it for things like, you know, water facilities and, and a lot of things that it can be used for that are critical. And this isn't one of them. I mean, so there.
Mr. Brown?
Yes, I was just trying to understand your point, because this isn't REIT funding. This is through the Washington State Recreation and Conservation Office.
Yeah, but it's going to be matched with, with other funds, including REIT.
Is that correct?
Yeah, it's in the packet.
Page 62, number four.
All right. It doesn't change my vibe, but okay. Anyway.
It was on the first or second page.
Mr. Mann?
I just want to give Ms. Brenner credit for being consistent on this point and on this park for six years. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Any more discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
That passes 6 to 1 with Councilmember Brenner opposed.
Mr. Chair, there is no, nothing further from politics.
Okay, and the next item we've already dealt with. We move to introduction items. Is there a motion to introduce?
So moved.
Second?
We have a motion and a second to introduce these five items. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passes 7-0. Committee reports, Natural Resources.
Yeah, we had one item in Natural Resources, and it was in, proposed, two proposed interlocal agreements combining the functions of the Wyro One Water Management Joint Board and the Wyro One Salmon Recovery Board. And we had quite a long discussion about that, and provided the administration some of our preferences regarding which of the two to use. to use, and we kind of mixed and matched, took Exhibit A for the, for the interlocal agreement in the diagram from Exhibit B to go along with that, and so that will be coming back to us for a final vote, once it goes to those parties, to see if they can agree on it.
Okay, thanks. And there was nothing else for finance discussed?
Sorry?
No.
Where's, I don't think so.
There's a presentation.
No, we had some presentations, sorry. Yeah, so we had a presentation from the Washington State Risk Pool, that is a, the county is a member of several other counties that collectively share the risk associated with being a government, and gave us a presentation, and it's like everything is hunky-dory and well-managed, and the county appears to be doing an excellent job at, at risk management and driving down our overall expenditures. Second item we had was quarterly finance report, and apparently, again, things are looking fairly good. We're ahead of schedule in terms of revenue collection, and I think they're coming through, we're a little behind in expenses or on target for expenses, but things are looking good. We had a update on the Cascadia Rising event, which is a simulation of a statewide magnitude nine earthquake, is the simulation, as to how we would respond, and the, and the purpose is to, to learn how well-prepared we are and where the holes are. And the final one was, we had an update on the, the County Works Department on the Birch Bay Drive and Pedestrian Facility Project.
Thank you. Public Works?
We had, I thought, an extremely interesting discussion on, regarding electronic home monitoring. I had mixed feelings about putting it on, because I was expecting to get that kind of a report from the Jail Diversion Task Force, and I felt a little bad, because the co-chair of that task force was at our meeting, so I blamed it all on Councilmember Mann, because he was the one who, who asked me to put it on the agenda. But I do think we got some very interesting information, and everybody was very civil, which was nice, too. So, keep tuned, and, and we will be getting a really, you know, now that they're very sure we want to get an update, we'll be getting it from the task force, too, I'm sure. And then we recommended the resolution establishing a jail stakeholder work for, work group, and I've got mixed feelings about the makeup of it. I don't have mixed feelings about doing it, but I have very mixed feelings about the makeup of it, so, and that, we didn't pass anything, we just discussed it and left it open to people to bring back recommendations, too.
Thank you. That does it for committee reports. Council member update, or other items first, other items of business.
Business.
Not of business, no, I have a report, so I'll wait, I guess, sorry.
Okay, any other items of business? Okay, now we'll go to council member updates. Mr. Wymer?
Nope. So, the incarceration task force that we were just talking about, just to keep you updated on what, what we're doing, last time you gave me the, a go-ahead to go back out to find a facilitator and a consultant to help the task force do its work, since we ended the contract of our prior facilitator consultant. So, just to let you know, we will be going out officially and publicizing the RFQ, June eighth, I believe, is when it gets published, and hopefully within two weeks after that, we will have some responses, hopefully some excellent responses, and then we'll be coming back with some budget items to help pay for the contracts that we set up with those folks. There's money left over from the initial contract, and there's also more than enough money that, you may remember, we set aside in the jail fund to help cover costs of consultants and so on. So, we have, we have the fund set aside, it's been budgeted, it's okay.
Thank you.
Can I?
Yes.
Respond? That's another one I have mixed feelings about, so somebody's going to need to really convince me. If the planning unit can take care of itself without having a hired facilitator, which it's had up until, you know, the last time, it, that should be a wake-up call for a lot, and these are people on this task force that I would think are extremely professional and can work together very well. Again, mixed feelings, but I want it to succeed, that's for sure.
Duly noted. Thank you, Ms. Brenner.
Mr. Brown, anything?
Just like to take the opportunity to thank our veterans this weekend.
You're welcome.
Yes, you are. Thank you for us.
That's right. We got a real, a live one.
A live one?
Well, you know, in my face.
We are grateful for the presence of a veteran.
Well, lost all the live ones in my family.
Oh, boy. I'm going to go home and tell on you.
Oh, no, don't you, don't you dare.
Okay, do you have anything, any?
Uh, no.
No?
Thank you for asking.
Mr. Donovan?
Yeah, it's, so, it was ski-to-ski weekend. I didn't do it this year, but I've been doing this race off and on for over twenty years, I'm that old. And I just want to thank, I never get a chance to publicly thank all the hundreds of volunteers who do this race, and it doesn't work without the volunteers. No people have been here about race fees going up, but it's, it's a hard race to put on, they do a great job. And there is a lot in the news, this, the results that a Waukesha County team won for the first time in thirty years, which is not quite accurate, because the Waukesha County Women's Team won last year, but that's, I, some of us have done this race in the county division, and never having cracked the top five, it's cool to see. Was Beaver's Tree Service got first, maybe benefiting from a flat tire. But, no, there's, there's athletes from all over the world that come to this thing, and it's really intimidating, and we're lining up on the ski thing, and there's like guys from the Norwegian National Cross Country Team up there. So, to see a county team win is, is great, so congrats to them.
Mr. Sidhu?
Just before you, if you do, I'd just like to say, did you just draw a reference to the fact that we use our recreational industries to draw tourism internationally?
Intentionally.
Good, thank you.
No, I have nothing.
You have nothing?
I want to correct a statement.
Okay, correct what?
When I said we have a live one, I said, no, this is important, and I want everybody to listen. I come from a family of generations of service people, and we are, there's less and less people who serve, and they're out there protecting more and more of us who don't serve. So, that was kind of what I meant, because it's harder and fewer to find when it's about servicemen, and they do, and you did, they do an incredible job, and I don't think they get enough credit, they don't get their benefits fast enough, and they, and I think they just don't get treated as, as good as they should. So, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Well, thank you, thank you, thank you. Okay, with no other business before the council, we are adjourned. He is alive.
And that was what I meant.